I hope so. I hope so.
It's six, maybe?
Well, it's actually 5:45, but that's all right. We called the meeting to order, it's 5:50. I think we're in good shape as far as organizing for the interviews, so I think we can go right to the interview.
Yeah, sure. Let me, everybody have their questions?
Yeah.
That's what I was just coming around for.
Welcome back, Grady.
Thank you, and I'm very happy to be here. And it's been quite a, quite a process that we put together. I think it's been very good to meet a lot of different people active in the community, as well as, I'm just thrilled to be here tonight to be considered finalists, and I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. We're gonna start out with some questions, I'm gonna start with my first one, which is, how do you see the OPEB issue? Is this like a credit card debt would run up? Is it like a long-term mortgage? Do you feel Cohasset should do more than, quote, "pay as you go," unquote, that it start funding the OPEB stabilization fund with a percentage of normal costs or 100% of normal costs going forward, eventually funding all of the costs out of the OPEB stabilization fund? So, it's a question.
Sure. It's a good question, I understand that the OPEB is approximately $32 million. I was looking at something that was a couple of years old, so I apologize if it's not, you know, on the money. But it is a serious problem, not only for the town, but across the country with local governments that have these large unfunded liabilities of other post-employment benefits, such as medical and, in Eric Gansett I came from, retirees were also entitled to dental and life insurance until, you know, they died. So, these are very long-term obligations, and I understand that there is an OPEB committee that's been studying the issue here. I was not privy as to what they were recommending, but I was very involved in doing, bringing some actuaries to Narragansett to look at ours. We had roughly an $80 million project, or a problem. And your question is whether it's, it's something like a, you know, a credit card issue, or something more long-term like a mortgage, it's somewhere in between. And it's becoming more and more problematic as the credit rating agencies are looking at this all the time, and in the interest of full disclosure, it's gonna become required in the near future to start disclosing this in prospectuses when you wanna do public financings. And so, it could affect your rates that you pay, it could affect your credit ratings, ultimately affecting what you pay for your debt. I think really the best way to deal with OPEB issues are twofold, I think you need to try to, first of all, understand what the magnitude of the problem is, and then try to, try to get at changing what the obligations are for retirees. It's a little hard for retirees that are currently out, but for future retirees, it's, you know, you can work on negotiations. I know in Rhode Island, we were looking for state aid, not funding, but for the legislative remedies to help us to get through it, and empower us to, for instance, not have any of the OPEB benefits be greater than what the state offered its retirees, that's what we were working with with the league. So, I mean, I think it's something that needs to be addressed, and what we were looking at was pretty much marrying a lot of the, both the pension reform that had happened in Rhode Island, and also trying to have, negotiate some different retiree benefits for, for future retirees through the contract negotiations. I was able to do some, some changes in Narragansett as it related to medical, and, you know, there's also some things that you can do too, is try to encourage people to work longer. So, like in our case, in Narragansett, we had our own pension plan that we actually administer. So, one of the things we were actually looking at was the actuaries had come up with, trying to encourage people to work longer, so that the money that's in the system would actually stay there longer, and then when they retired, try to go out on, you know, like a Medicare supplement versus actual retire early, which is what we had, people could go out after 20 years, and the town was paying pretty much the full freight. When I say full freight, it was like 80% of the cost.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
So, if I, just to summarize where, what I hear you saying, Grady. It's, in your view, you tackle both the scope of the problem by first defining the scope, and also deal with the structure, which got you there in the first place.
Right, and I, I think the key is, you have to involve actuaries, 'cause actuaries actually have your, your life expectancies of your employees, they have the, the profile of your organization, and so you really need to have them run numbers. And in fact, what I was doing was writing some suggestions, you know, 'cause they were also helping us, we had a pension, unfunded liability with the pension as well, of about 30 some odd million dollars, and they were helping us with that as well. And, so we were kinda looking at, you know, we can actually maybe kill two birds with one stone by addressing, you know, requiring employees to work longer to get the same level of benefits that they were expecting, that they went out earlier. And we were also paying for the spouse, for the medical and dental and life insurance, it's just, I hadn't seen anything like this until I moved out here.
You guys still hiring?
And actually, some people could actually, if they were non, they could work 10 years, leave, go someplace else, and when you were of retirement age to draw that pension, you could actually receive the medical benefit, the same level that someone who'd worked 20 or 30 years. So, that all needed to be changed, so. So, yes, back to your, your follow-up question, it needs to be looked at, define the problem, look at different scenarios and trying to address it. And again, this is a long-term problem, that took a long time to get to where it is, so you need to be a little bit more reasonable, I'm not saying you, but we need to be reasonable at trying to determine how long it's gonna take to get where we need to be. But if we don't do anything, we're about ready to, you know, potentially could go off a cliff financially. So, it's, it's very serious, it needs to be addressed. It's gonna affect the town's ability to provide other service delivery if it's not addressed.
Thank you. Diane?
My question?
Yep.
Okay. So, you've now spent some time in Cohasset, met many of our residents and employees. Why do you wanna be Cohasset's next town manager? What unique qualities do you feel you will offer Cohasset in particular, and has your answer to this question evolved since when you first applied to today?
I really, I love the town. Narragansett was, has some unique characteristics to Cohasset, but what I like about Cohasset, it's, it's a nice enclave here, it has beautiful coastline, but what really attracts me to the job itself is, I think there's a lot of challenges, and I think that there, there's a lot of expectations that the new manager is gonna need to work with the Board of Selectmen and the various different boards and commissions to, to try to address a number of the issues. What I'm saying, it's not just OPEB, but there's infrastructure issues, there's maybe some financial issues. I think that I can lend a lot of my background and expertise in those areas. I've also worked in what I would consider to be highly performing organizations. When I was in City of Burbank in California, by California standards, it was an old city, it was 100 years old, but they had their act together from like the 1950s on. And so, you know, I really learned early on in my career from a really good city. In fact, the City of Burbank was one of the first municipalities that actually created the whole concept of chart of accounts for municipal government, because they had their own IT department that created the accounting system, and they needed to have that, and they evolved. And so, they were pretty much the leaders in the 60s in chart of accounts. And so, I, I've learned a lot from Burbank, and then I went to the City of Peoria, which was very dysfunctional when I first started working there. We had a lot of infighting from the governing body, we had a number of managers come and go, and I was able to actually observe and learn from my jobs there of what really worked. Eventually, the town stabilized, and we were able to, through cooperative working relationships with the council and the manager, and do some strategic planning, which I was involved in with the, the planning process, we were able to really get a hold of the situation and turn the town into a highly performing organization. And that was really, it started off with the political leadership of the mayor, and also our leadership of the manager at the time, but I was able to learn under the manager some of the techniques that he did to help with the situation there. So, I, did I answer all your questions? You had like-
The only thing is, whether it's your, your kind of reason or approach to wanting the job has, has evolved.
Oh, okay.
You know, what has kind of shifted in your mind from when you sent an application into, to today, if anything?
No, it, it has actually. You know, I actually had seen the, the announcement, and I did a little research, read some newspaper articles online, and I wasn't really sure if I wanted to apply, to be honest with you. And then, gentleman, Mr. Kobayashi, who was handling the recruitment, actually contacted me. I hadn't worked with him on a couple of other recruitments. And so, you know, I, I looked at the prospectus of the, of the position, and did a little bit more research, and talked to other people, and I realized, you know, it, it seems like, from what I could tell, that the board was trying to work together and really try to get some stability to the town. And so, I, I would say it's evolved, and I'm very pleased with what I've seen.
Great, thank you.
Ma'am?
What success have you had lobbying with federal and state grants, and our writing grants for projects? Name some, like examples, Sandy and other storms. I know, do you have a disaster plan in place, just the whole, and getting grant money afterwards?
Okay. Well, when I was town manager in Narragansett, it was actually before Sandy, but we had, I think it was Earl and Irene, I think that happened just before. I hope I'm not messing this up, 'cause I change the names all the time, but there could have been an Earl from 20 years ago.
We're not gonna know. If the phone rings, we'll know.
2010 and 2011, we had storms that weren't nearly as bad as Sandy, but as you know, nor'easters sometimes can be typically worse than what we get on the coastline from a hurricane, at least recent history's been that. When we had the 2011 major storm, we had a lot of issues, and I was able to help some of the residents that had flooding from, from the storm. FEMA had denied their claims, and I was able to assist them with it.
Where did you get the money from?
Well, this, that was private, that was private property with, with their situation. The town also had damage, we were fortunate because the, the storm really caused some damage that we typically get for nor'easters, and we, we were able to get some reimbursement back from FEMA on that. But when we had the flooding, I don't know if you had the historic flooding that we had in March of 2010, we had what they would consider to be a 500-year storm event, and I had only been on the job for six weeks and this happened. And I was like going-
Welcome aboard.
Right, and we actually, before it happened and as it was happening, I was able to assemble the emergency management team, which, our emergency management team consisted of the fire chief, who was our emergency management director, the police chief, the public works director, the town engineer, and a variety of other department directors. And we were actually planning our responses, one, you know, trying to get the information out to the residents. We also had, which I found later on, that we had a, kind of a failing reverse 911 system that was old and was just not working. So, we had a lot of lessons learned, but we had a number of facilities that were damaged from the storm. We had, we had a small dam that actually broke and caused some damage to that, and some buildings with the roofs, we had some minor flooding. So, we, we actually were able to get reimbursed from FEMA, but it took actually almost two years from the time that this happened to the time we actually got the reimbursements. And, you know, the initial reimbursements kinda trickled in, and we just held those in reserve, and the good news was between our liability and property insurance that we had through, we were self-insured or partially self-insured, we were able to make ourselves whole with that, and then we were, we had money in reserves that we were able to actually pay for that. So then, once we got the money from the feds, you know, that, that was put back into the reserves.
Now, do you, do you work on the grants with the schools or other areas, or do you not?
In Narragansett, I didn't, although when I was in Narragansett, I worked, I, you're familiar with the fishing industry and what's happening in the fishing industry, and Narragansett, I think is like the sixth largest fishing port on the eastern United States. And so, we, we've been seeing the fishing industry just decline because of, because of the federal regulations, and they're doing what they need to do, but unfortunately, the fishermen have been like losing their boats and their jobs, and it's, so it's affecting the economy. So, I was able to work, we actually had a economic summit where the Economic Development Agency, the federal agency, came to Narragansett. I played host to that, we had state stakeholders. Our fishing port is actually managed by Department of Environmental Management, but following that workshop that we had that took, it was like a two-day summit, the Economic Development Agency made me aware of, of this grant opportunity. Actually, it was a series of grants. And I worked with the DEM, which is the state agency that managed our port, to apply. And we applied for a $2.9 million grant. I assisted with the narrative, my staff as well helped, and it wasn't until after I was already gone and left from Narragansett, it was in January of this year that they had the big check and the announcement that we had received the money. And it was a collaboration. Grants nowadays are really hard to get, you know, you have to really build a case for them. But the more people that can collaborate on grants, different entities together, it really helps make your case, because then they see that you're leveraging the money and going further. When I was in Arizona, I had actually applied successfully to the Arizona Commission on the Arts for a couple arts grant programs. One was a community cultural assessment that actually the University of Massachusetts came out and assisted us with. And the other one was to actually help pay for a part-time cultural arts coordinator for the town, and I was able to successfully get those funding. Also, I, my staff and I, and I was the one that wrote the narrative for the grant for the Arizona Office of Tourism, we were able to receive money or grant funding to actually create a website to promote the City of Peoria for tourism, and then we were able to use a, part of that grant to also put together a publication that promoted Peoria, like a visitor's guide. And so, but what was unique about the visitor's guide is that we also were able to have some advertising that also offset the costs, so the grant between that and the advertising completely paid for that. But I have had some experience with it, but some of the larger organizations I've worked in, they had people that that's all they did was just, you know, write grants.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just ask a informational thing? Just could, what was the approximate population of both Narragansett and Peoria?
Sure. Narragansett is 16,000 people, and Peoria, when I first started working for Peoria in 1990, it was 50,000 people, and when I left, almost 20 years later, it was 160,000. And 10 years before I started, in 1980, it was only about 5,000 people, so it's just-
Really?
The Phoenix area, though, all the municipalities are just, they're, they're huge growths of, I mean, you wouldn't see it anywhere else except for maybe in the Dallas area, suburban towns around there.
Was, on Peoria, what was the governmental structure? You were the town, what was?
No, I, it-
I'm sorry, I don't have your resume right in front of me.
No, it's okay. It's a council-manager form of government. I started off as the assistant to the city manager, which is a career track position for someone that wants to be a city manager. I did that initially for 12 years, worked directly with the council, but I worked under the city manager. And while I was doing that, I, I was assigned a variety of different assignments. I was the HR director for five years, and I was the, you know, equal employment opportunity person for the town. I also handled the risk management. But there were a variety of different jobs and assignments, because we went through a number of, you know, over the years, different managers. And then I promoted to the, to head up a new department called Communications and Public Affairs, and I did that for about seven years. And then I was also, took a lateral position as the deputy community services department director, and that was a department, it was a Parks and Rec department with 140 full-time employees.
And, and the, the city manager, is that a hired, is that hired by council, the council?
Yes, it's a count, it, it works the same way as this position here does, the exception is there's not a town, annual town meeting.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Steve?
We, we briefly discussed budgeting in our first interview together, and we have a, Cohasset as a community has a long history of Yankee thrift. With that in mind, would you describe for the board your budgeting, your budgeting approach and your budget management philosophy?
Okay. Well, I tend to be very conservative, so I think that there's, you know, that, that's a good match there. As far as my approach, I think it's, it's one where it involves a lot of people. Initially, I would work very closely with finance director, I had a chance to meet her today, and she seems like she's great and really on top of things. But I, I would initially work with her on doing some forecasting, like to do forecasts in the fall, just before we start doing the budget for the next year. And it'd be also good to see how receipts are coming in and revenues, to see that they're on target. The good news is, in a town that's still relying on property tax, it's, it's very predictable. The exception is, you know, with the state aid, you know, you just don't know what's gonna happen with that. In Arizona, it was just the opposite, the, it was, sales tax was the lion's share of the revenues, and then property taxes didn't really cover much, except for the school department's expenses and our debt. So, when we had debt, you know, it would be covered under the, it would be covered under the property tax. Anyway, so those are the differences. My understanding how it works here, though, is there is a, there are some committees that would actually be involved. So, on the capital side, there's a capital committee, and there, I wanna, I wanna say finance committee, but there's a committee that starts-
Advisory board.
Advisory board. The advisory board would also be very involved. We had a good discussion today about, you know, my background and, and when I started Narragansett, it was pretty much operating under a line item budgeting system, and I had moved it immediately to a program-based budgeting system. And, you know, they, they seemed to be very interested in that. But, I'm probably getting off your, your initial question, but I guess my idea is, is that you have to really start off with a good understanding of where you are before you start proposing your budget, and so you really wanna have a good understanding as how your revenues are tracking. One of the things I, I noticed when I started in Narragansett is, we had a backlog of unpaid taxes that hadn't been paid, and, you know, we used to have what was called tax sales, I'm sure that you have something very similar to that here. And it's a really nice way to motivate people to pay if they're behind on their taxes. And we also had other things too, of people, you know, like seniors and elders and such that had other exemptions, so they were able to get something, so that they weren't getting the full buyout of the taxes. But the point is, you really, you need to go after revenue sources, and if you're not, we also had, you know, a backlog of, of parking tickets that hadn't been paid. And so, we actually, the town had never used a collection agency, and I suggested we go out to bid and get a collection agency, so we did. So, that brought in some revenues, and it was a nice shot in the arm to do that. But you needed to, to stay on top of these things, because you wanna have, you know, your finances being level, and not, you know, have these, you have that enough with state aid.
Vaguors, yeah.
Yeah. So, the point is, you, you want to go and you wanna do really good projections, and it's good to actually go beyond one year, obviously, you wanna do five years if you can, and also on your capital side, you need to know what your needs are. So, you really wanna work with your department directors and determine what their needs are, and then work with the, the advisory boards. And I have a really good background in working with, you know, we had a finance committee that was new when I was in Narragansett, that was a new process. So, basically, at the same time that I presented my proposed budget to the council, the finance committee received that budget at the same time, and then they were able to comment and advise the council on their recommendations.
I just got thrown off with your program-based budget.
Oh, sure. And does everyone understand, maybe I didn't, I should explain what that really is.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. A line item budget is like the oldest type of budgeting system around, and what it is is, each line item, you might have a line that says, you know, personnel, you might have one that says benefits, another one that might say office supplies. But you have categories, you have what would be called personnel services, which would be everything related to staff, and the next group would be your commodities, I'm sorry, it would be your services. So, it might be contracts that you have, and so forth, and the next group of line items would be commodities. And some, some places have even, you might have capital under that, or you might just have, most places just go and they have a capital budget, and they just put it all in one place. So, that's a line item budget. A program budget takes it the step beyond that, and if you can imagine like a police department, you have the patrol people, the, the uniformed officers that are in vehicles that are driving around and responding to calls, you have the dispatchers, so that's another activity, so they would be broken down by activity, and then you might have the criminal section where you have the detectives. So, the reason why it's good to have that broken down is you have a really good understanding what your costs are. And it's important to know your costs, because when you're trying to look at maybe adding additional personnel, then you, you can get the full freight. What is it gonna cost if, if you enhance the service or have this different program? So, so that takes the budgeting to the next level, and you have line items within each of those programs, okay? And then when I met, when we met last, I talked about, I was trying to move Narragansett to what's called performance-based budgeting, which is the next level, which is, it's outcome-driven. So, so for instance, with like police or fire, one of the best indicators, like for instance with fire or, or rescue, is response times. So, if you have a response time of say four minutes, chances are, if they can get there in four minutes or less, you're gonna have people survive a heart attack, or whatever the, the issue might be, or an accident. So, that's a, probably the best indicator of that particular service. So, when people, department heads put in requests to the budget, you know, you're looking at it from what would be called performance measures. A performance measure in this case would be like a response time. So, that, those are things that, with modern budgeting, that you see all the time, that you've heard of zero-based budgeting, and that's, that's really just saying, you know, hey, we're starting off at zero, and you have to justify everything that you have, you know, the services and what you're wanting to do. But at a local level, it's, it's not really a practical way to, to budget.
If I, if I might, I just, you probably know from meeting with the finance groups today, that the budget process has already become, the acting town manager's been working on a budget, so, given that this would, if you were hired, that this would be your budget, how do you see your role going forward through the budget process in this?
Well, I would, I would respect the, the system that, and the process that's already happened to date. I might, I might be able to comment on it, and, but I, I probably would try to work through the system, because there are gonna be some differences than what I've had in past, you know, budget- because there are gonna be some differences than what I've had in past, um, you know, budgeting, such as the different committees that are gonna have involvement, the town meeting. But I would definitely wanna get up to speed on the budget and learn about the different departments, um, you know, and their budgets. And also the enterprise funds, the, the water and sewer, and then the capital needs. So, and, and just make, I would also double check with department directors just to make sure that, um, everything, maybe for instance on a capital need, like I know that the, this building is being looked at right now, you know, what, what is in the budget. I didn't see, you know, maybe I didn't see something in there for next year or in the, in the five-year capital budget. So what, what a, you know, what is the, the plan there? So I guess the point is, I am coming in the middle of a movie. And so I would just respect the, the process and, and work with it. And, um, you know, that's, I think that's the best that can happen. Um, if selected, I would also try to work with, um, the, uh, the current interim manager and, and try to, you know, just ask questions of him. And, and I think that's just very important to help with the transition. Not only help me, but also, uh, make sure that there's no hiccup in the organization between him leaving and me starting.
Okay, it's your question.
My question, question, if I can. I'm so sorry. I was listening so intently, I didn't. Our form of local government is, is different, a little bit different from the one which you work now. What is you see, what do you see as similar in Cohasset versus Narragansett and dissimilar?
Um, I think really, for all intents and purposes, i- it's very similar not only with Narragansett, but, um, you know, with Arizona and California experiences. The, the key difference is, is the level of public participation in, in the, um, you know, in the advisory committees. And I think that's great. I'm, uh, I'd say that's one aspect. The other aspect is the town meeting. Um, and I think that's great. I've, I've read up on Cohasset's, um, process and, and, um, you know, I, I feel very comfortable with it. I think it's, I've actually have been, um, a finalist in a couple other communities and those that also had, um, town meetings. And I think that Cohasset has probably like the most democratic process, even though town meeting by virtue is very, uh, democratic. But even just how you can get warrants on, um, none of the other communities that I saw had the ability to have just ten citizens, um, that can put an item on. I realize it has to go through the advisory committee and, you know, it goes through for review, but from what I understand, I mean, that, that's, that's pretty powerful. That's great. It's like a initiative process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, uh, if, if, if ten signatures for the regular, for a special, it's a hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, back to me. Um, what do you view as the top three issues facing Cohasset?
I, I would say, we talked a little bit about the, um, OPEB issue. And I think that that is definitely an issue that needs to be, um, addressed, at least a game plan. And it, it sounds to me, in, in the research I did, I mean, there's a trust fund that's been set up. There's been some token amounts that have been set aside to put into that. So I mean, I think the town is going down the right direction. Again, it, so I, I would say that's one of the, um, pressing issues. I would say the other is, um, infrastructure, um, and, and trying to finance the infrastructure. So, um, you know, I know that this building's being looked at right now. I know that, um, there's, uh, I think a sewer treatment plant that's being looked at. I think roads, there's concern about the condition of roads and, and trying to make sure that there's, um, adequate money to, uh, maintain the roads that are in town. So, uh, I would say that's it. I think stability. Stability is a very big issue in this town. Because, um, you need to have both the, um, governing body and the, and the manager have some stability, um, between them. And, and the good thing is with the, the, the Board of Selectmen, you know, your terms are overlapping. So there are some assurances that there's gonna be some continuity between, um, elections. Narragansett, we didn't have that. Every two years, everyone was up at the same time. And so from a manager's standpoint, that wasn't good because you might be going down a particular path or fork in the road, and then your, your council not come back, and then you're going down a different path. So it's not, here, I think it's much further evolved, um, from that standpoint. But stability is very important because if you are trying to address the, many of the issues we talked about, you need that game plan and you need somebody to help the Board of Selectmen and, and these different committees move through and, and, you know, help provide that, um, that leadership and management. Um, I, I think stability is important for the organization. You know, you have a lot of employees that, um, and department directors that are probably, you know, a little skittish, you know, just because of what's happening. And I'm not, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying that's just the reality.
You recognize that.
If you don't mind, um, of the three, and, and don't feel that I'm looking for solutions, but give me an idea of what you're gonna bring to each of those three items that you named, OPEB, infrastructure, and stability, that help advance or help us make progress.
Okay. I think that's a fair, reasonable question. As far as infrastructure, um, I'll give you an example. I've worked in a very fast-growing community that wasn't able to keep up with infrastructure because of the, the nature of the growth. Growth provided for that, but then the older areas of town, um, became neglected. And so I saw what you needed to do to stay up on top of that, so we started developing ten-year capital improvement plans that were funded. We had a number of different funding sources. Uh, because we were growing, we had what was called development impact fees. I, I know what's involved in doing that. When I started Narragansett, the condition of the roads were deplorable. And I was concerned that, um, the impact on, on the town for, um, you start having roads and streets that are declining, the next thing you're gonna start seeing is, is property values affected. You start seeing property values affected, you're gonna start seeing things like crime. And I mean, you see this in all these inner-city areas, and even suburban areas, you see it as well. So when I started, that was an issue that I brought to the council's attention. And so we were able to get a citizens committee to actually help study it. I was able to bring in, um, a firm that actually did pavement management study with some recommendations. And so, um, there was a sixteen million dollar, um, bond that the citizens approved by something like eighty-four percent. I mean, it was huge. And because they got it, they, they understood. And the, the beauty of it was, the way that we had structured our debt was that, um, most of our debt was structured so that instead of like the mortgage where it's interest in the, the early part of the years, it was mostly, um, principal. So basically, it's a tiered system so that over time, as you pay off your debt, you could take on more debt. And so, um, anyway, so what I'm trying to tell you is that I would be able to help because I've had some experience with, with trying to identify issues and trying to sell a process and, and trying to deal with those. I was even involved in the financing with our, our FA, our financial advisor on that. As far as OPEB, soon as, before I even was hired by the, the town in Narragansett, I saw the financials and I knew that they were going, huh, both with the town pension. They had their own private pension plan that the town administered. And then, which was, um, you know, thirty-some-odd million dollar unfunded liability. And then on the, um, on the, uh, OPEB, they had like an eighty million dollar unfunded liability. And the town was not even keeping up with the annually required contribution or the R. So it was just a real bad system or bad setup. So I enlightened the council when I was interviewing that these were some serious issues that were gonna need to be ta- addressed. And so, you know, I, I'm familiar with this. And I, rather than just trying to say, hey, I'm the expert, I mean, I, I basically brought on actuaries, that, that's their business. And they were able, able to advise us as to, you know, steps to take. In fact, they're, um, you know, they wanted to wait through an election and bring on a, a manager before they started addressing it, but they are starting to address these issues. And then the, um, so let's see, infrastructure.
Stability.
Stability. When I worked, um, in the city of Peoria, I mentioned earlier that we had a revolving door for managers and, and the council. Because of the high, the rapid growth, we had turnover on the council and with the manager. And we, through a manager that was actually my mentor, um, we actually started doing planning with the council. In other words, strategic planning, uh, visioning and, and developing business plans. And basically, the council was very dysfunctional at that time, for about five years. At least the five years that I, when I first started there, and then it, it started changing. And we were actually able through some, using a, a facilitator, um, at these council workshops, we were able to actually have them identify their top priorities, um, over the next, um, three to five years. Why, the reason I bring that up is that I, I know the process, and it's something that I've done at the nonprofit level before. And it's something that I'm sure some of you have done as well before. And actually, I was able to observe that those same council members were able to work with one another. And they were able to put their differences aside because they were using the dots and they needed to, to trade off. And, and all it was is just politics at a simple, very simple level. I also worked very closely with, um, council members because I managed their staff. And I also helped with high-level, um, complaints that they received from the public. And so I worked very closely and I got to know council members. And I know, you know, that, you know, we had seven council members and each of them had a certain set of priorities or issues that were important to them. And so you just, you, you got to know people and what their issues and priorities are. And I think that's important with a manager, is to get to know each of you individually. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. All of you can still be on the same page, um, and share the same vision. I, I think all of you want what's best for the town, but the manager can help you guys, the right person, and harness your, your, um, your group to be a highly effective team. And, and so I was able to observe that in, in Peoria. And, um, unfortunately, in Narragansett, um, the, uh, the council really didn't wanna do the, the planning process and, and work on some of the group dynamic issues. They wanted to kind of the status quo. So that was, that was kind of a difficult thing.
Thanks.
Sure.
Should you be named town manager, what would your first week look like? Your first sixty days and your first ninety days?
Okay. The, the first week, I would really try to, um, try to sit down and meet with the department directors individually in their offices and try to get to know them as, as individuals. But also, it may not be the first week, but I would also like to try to get to, to know each of you individually. And, um, would like to have that happen at least in the first two weeks. And I realize you're all very busy. I'd also like to get to, to know the superintendent and start developing a good, positive working relationship with the school department. And also the, the area communities, um, if, if, I, I certainly wouldn't meet with them the first week but I would try to set up appointments to meet with them in the next, um, three to four weeks. The first, uh, week, I would also try to meet with the union leaders, because I think it's really good to have good labor management, uh, relations and to let them know that I have an open-door policy. You know, if, if things can't get resolved at, um, you know, through the chain of command, that, uh, I'm open and, and always have an open door to, to talk to them. I would also like to have some sort of a, um, a function with all the town employees. You know, like a open house kind of thing, not, not anything really formal. But just, uh, so I can get to know them and, um, let them know I'm approachable. I think that's very essential. Sixty days out, um, what I'd like to accomplish in the first sixty days is, one, uh, be really on top of the budget. Budget's really gonna be critical, um, it always is, every year. And so I'd also like, within the sixty days, to start having attended a number of different, um, board meetings, committee meetings, um, not just here, but with other advisory blo- bodies. Just have that visibility and, and to get to know them. Also like to meet with the, um, if, I'm saying sixty days, but for them probably sooner. Like to get to, um, meet the commissioners of the, um, the water and sewer, uh, commissions as well. I wouldn't have that be sixty days, it'd be sooner. And just, I'd like to have, um, I would also like to meet with the legislators, um, in the area as well. And, um, it may not be realistic, but in Rhode Island, you know, we were even able to meet with, you know, state agency heads at, at our level. It was a small state. So the smallest had that advantage. Massachusetts being much larger might be difficult, but I think it, certainly the legislators would be no problem. I'd also like to meet with the league and talk about strategies, um, as it relates to, um, you know, state aid and, and, um, you know, any legislation that might be coming up that might be impacting the town so that I can keep you guys, um, completely apprised of that. So I, I think that's pretty much it. And I think, again, keeping the, the Board of Selectmen informed of, of different, um, actions and activities around the town and, and anything outside of our town that might affect us. Uh, I think the line of communications is very important. I'd like to, to have formal, not formal, that sounds wrong. I like to have informal, one-on-one meetings with the, um, board members, like maybe once, once a month. You know, e- either a mutual place, that would be, you know, a, a coffee shop or my office, whatever works. And if that doesn't work because of your hours or whatever, I could do it, you know, Saturday, you know, over coffee or, or on the phone. Or if you can't do it, you know, this particular time, then that would be fine as well. But the point is, I wanna develop good working relationships with, with each of you. And also help one another. I mean, I could help coach you on maybe some policy issues you guys might be interested in. Um, and also I might be using you guys to weigh in on certain, um, ideas that I have before I bring it to the full, um, committee, because you guys have the history here. So in ninety days, I, you know, I, I, I think I'd kind of repeat everything that I've mentioned. But the key is, is, um, I think I wanna be just very active in the community. Um, I would probably by ninety days, um, I believe there's a rotary here. I would look at, um, maybe, uh, seeking them out to see if maybe I could be a, a featured speaker. And then hopefully I can get invited to join, as that's invitation-only. Um, I was a rotarian in, in Arizona for about five years and enjoyed it. When I was in Narragansett, because there wasn't one in town, there was Alliance, I joined Alliance. But I ju- I think it's very important to be involved in the community. And I, I'm also very interested in the historical society here as well.
Yeah.
Martha?
You know that we don't have HR.
Right.
Working on it. And it must be built up from the, the ground up. You touched it. Have you had any experience of creating your own program or not just walking in?
Sure. That's a good question. I, as I mentioned earlier, I actually oversaw the Human Resources Department for five years in, in Peoria. And it was about nine people I, I was responsible for, um, the function there. In Narragansett, it was similar to what it is here in that the, um, the executive assistant to the manager, um, had been also responsible for human resources. And the two of them kind of worked jointly on that. When I started, they had already converted that position over to a human resources position. I had to ask the council for a, an executive assistant because that person was really doing exclusively HR. But she was, um, she was not as experienced in human resources as, um, as I would have liked. And so there were a number of things that I saw that, you know, needed to happen. We needed to update a lot of our policies and procedures. We had policies and procedures that were like personnel regs. And we also had, um, we also had what was called, um, the Code of Ordances as related to some personnel matters, um, as well. And we addressed such things as HIPAA. And, um, while they did have some policy relating to the Americans with Disabilities Act, the, um, they hadn't updated some of the policies relating to, uh, Family Medical Leave Act and also the Fair Labor Standards Act, which under President Bush, there had been some significant changes that actually impacted our, um, uh, town. So I was able to kind of bring her up to speed on some of those, as well as some of the, um, we were treating our, um, exempt employees as hourly employees. the, we were treating our exempt employees as hourly employees. So when they would take leave, they would take it in hourly increments. And I was explaining under the Fair Labor Standards Act and under some court cases, they would be treated as hourly people and we would be subject, possibly if they ever challenged it, to paying them overtime in the past. So anyways, we, to your question, you know, I had to do a lot of this on my own to try to get this started because they were well-intentioned, but the previous manager didn't have experience with human resources. He had been the town engineer and at least he had to foresight that he needed some help in human resources, but the person that was hired was not as strong in that area. I mean, she had experience working in established HR for a corporation, but not in a municipality. And so there were a number of things that we changed. We didn't have performance employee, I'm sorry, employee performance appraisal systems in place, so that was something I was able to get started. I was stunned.
Yeah.
Don't be.
More common than you think.
Did you have it working with the schools? Was it the entire town?
You know, the schools had their own, they had their own.
This in Eric Ansett?
Yeah, in Eric Ansett, while we were one, like we are here, you know, it is one, you know, they're joined as far as the budget and such go. They had their own personnel person and their needs were unique because of the, you know, teaching and their requirements. But I would be open to looking at how we could have the synergies with the school department to see if maybe it could be a shared position. We were already talking, you know, with IT and finance and those areas, looking at those being, and purchasing, that those could be things that could be shared as well, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Steve.
Town meeting form of government is the most direct form of democracy and it's somewhat unique to the Northeast in any case. How do you envision operating within this environment? And from that perspective, how do you also envision leveraging our committee expertise, which is part and parcel of this?
Well, I've, I met a couple of the committee members and I was very impressed with their background and some of the things I was talking about, they were really big cheerleaders of like program-based budgeting and such. I would see that this as a resource to work with, a number of these people and the different committees. It is different, I haven't worked in a town that actually had a town meeting, but I don't see it as a hindrance. The only downside that I see, and it's not a negative, it just means that you have to be more on top of planning, is the time, if you come up with an idea and you want to try to go forward with it, you're going to have to run it through the process. So it might take you a year longer, but that's okay because the good thing is, is if you can sell it and you can market it properly, you'll get support for it.
That's right.
And so it's not such a bad thing. In fact, I might have mentioned this before when I interviewed, is the big buzzword in city management and town management right now is civic engagement. And I can't think of anything that's more engaging the citizens than a town meeting process. So I, and I'm open to it. You know, and I think one of the things, one of my hallmarks, and I mentioned this previously and that is, I am very flexible and adaptable, particularly to change. Because when I was working in the city of Peoria and it was growing at a very fast clip, we were reorganizing every two years or so. And I was also taking additional responsibilities that I didn't have before. So I, and having reviewed the bylaws and how the whole process works, I'm, I think I would adapt to it very easily. It just means that I have to do, you can't wait at last minute, you have to know the different deadlines for, you know, for instance, warrants and when things have to be done. You just have to stay on top of that and make sure that you work through the process.
You've really sort of touched on this through a lot of your different answers, but the Town Manager Act invests significant authority in the position of the town manager. How would you describe your working relationship with the Board of Selectmen?
I, you know, I read the Town Manager Act and I know that there's one, it's been revised and it's waiting for the legislature to make, to approve the amendments to it. I would say I have a really good working relationship with people and I respect each of you and your jobs because you have the most difficult job. I mean, you, you are the policymakers of the town and the chief executive is vested in you and you hire the person obviously to run the day-to-day and manage the town on a day-to-day basis. I, I don't see an issue with relationships with each of you. I think it's all based on mutual respect and, and from what I've seen, I think it's there. So I think that the point is, you know, as a, somebody that would be new coming in, it's very important to try to learn the culture of the organization and understand some of the pressures that you guys are all under from your constituents because you're the ones that are elected. And this is at least kind of the pep talk that we've always had at the staff meetings, is that understand that, you know, you may not always get what you want, but understand that, you know, we're not elected. If you were elected, it might be different, but, you know, the governing body is elected and we have to respect that and work with that and, you know, and most people understand it, you know, it's just that's the way it is. I, I've always had very good, positive working relationships, even in Eric Ansett where we ended up separating. The council members and I, to the very end, were respectful. We had some differences, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't go out talking negatively about them and they haven't said anything negatively about me after I left. I see them all the time in town at the grocery store and all that and we're cordial. So I think it's very important to come in with an open mind and try to establish positive working relationships with each of you. And then try to get, try to work with you as a group to try to achieve the maximum effectiveness of both your body and myself and the organization. Because we're all, I mean, it's not just, you're a team and the department heads and I are a team, we're all part of a bigger team and we're all like wheels, but we're all kind of, we should be working together towards the same goals.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and that's the last of our questions except for this. Do you have any questions for us?
I, I've enjoyed this. I, I know that you guys are probably getting very wary, this process has been long for you. I'm very interested in this position. Question with one of the gentlemen earlier was, is this a lifeboat for me or is this a, you know, is this a career opportunity for me? And I said, well, it's definitely not a lifeboat. You know, I, I definitely have a, at least I feel like I have a connection to the, to the town, to the organization. It's a wonderful town and I really think that I have a lot to offer the organization and offer you. And so please don't look at me as someone that's out of work and looking for something because I've never had any kind of a situation like I had in Eric Ansett and that was a unique situation, not to me, but to probably about a dozen other managers that have worked there. So, and I will tell you that I don't see that situation here at all. And my, everywhere I've worked as, as an employee, I've given a hundred and fifty percent and I've promoted, I've never had any lapse in my employment until now, so. No, I don't see this as a lifeboat. My wife and I would be looking at making this our home and being active in the community and not only contribute to the organization, but contribute and volunteer outside of the organization, so.
Anybody else?
No, thank you.
If you want to.
We have a very active rotary.
Excuse me?
We have a very active rotary here.
Great.
Martha's got some connections.
Connection and also historical society.
Awesome. I was a Paul Harris Fellow in Peoria and.
I am a Paul Harris Fellow.
Oh, great, great.
My husband was. I, you know, one of the two years.
Well, that's great. Well, I just, I think that the ideals of rotary and what they accomplish worldwide are great and I think, you know, local rotaries do a lot for the community as well, so. Anyways, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
I'm sure the answer is no, but if you want to stick around till seven thirty, we're having our OPEB presentation tonight, so.
It's been a long day.
I totally appreciate that, absolutely.
If there's a way I can.
We can DVR it for you.
That would be great. I would be looking forward to reading the report though and hearing that.
They've done some good work so far and did the actuarial study, which was really thoroughly done, so.
Great.
We're in for.
Well, it sounds like the town is going down the right path with that, so that's awesome.
We didn't have any program, any personnel board for fifteen years. We had one when we had Executive Secretary. And the minute we get a new town manager, it ended, so we really, from the ground up.
So is, how are appeals handled? I thought I read.
The town manager.
So like, but if the town manager terminates somebody.
Oh, he does negotiate, yeah. Well, it could go.
Would it come to the board here? Okay.
Well, first of all.
It wasn't clear in the Town Manager Act.
Well, it goes to the town manager, but doesn't the policy say they have the right to?
You know, it's never come past that, so I'm not sure.
The short answer is, is that there are numerous gaps and.
Due process, I mean, it would be important to have some sort of a body just to be able to review whether it's this body or a personnel board. Maybe this body can act as the personnel board.
Well, ideally, you know, the function itself removes as much of that risk as possible from percolating to the, to a point where there's little expertise to deal with it, so.
Good point. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks again, Steve.
Have a great Christmas.
Great, and thanks. Enjoyed lunch.
It was a great afternoon likewise.
Thanks.
Good seeing you again.
Sorry I couldn't make a cold sandwich and all.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, enjoyed lunch.
Taking the dillies?
Yes.
Danny still wants to stay here?
Yes. Well, without her, good night.
Good night.
Hey, do you want to take a short break and then come right back?
Please.
You have five to ten minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Seven and a half. Yeah, okay, that sounds great. Yeah, okay, that sounds great.
Five zero.
It's right here.
Oh, okay. The field renewed, okay. We have a motion on the field to renew business right now.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, we're a little bit early for OPEB, I think, unless you're wrong.
It's, um, it's the mobile station.
Oh, that makes sense.
It's the Mobile Mart. One ninety King Street is the Mobile Mart. The Mobemart at the corner of Sawyer.
Okay, so we'll wait till seven thirty for OPEB. You all here?
No.
We're not.
I think I'm in.
Oh, okay. Do you think the inspector? Okay, yeah, we can wait until we know whether I was.
Okay.
Okay, so while we're conducting our business, we're gonna be signing a lot of licenses, so try not to be disturbed by that. Selectmen comments.
Where do I want to start?
Steve?
Um, I actually have nothing at the moment.
Diane?
Um, the only thing I just want to mention is, I read in the Sunday Globe, this traffic warning that the police station is doing. So, um, in situations where it's not a major traffic violation, they're giving a, this lovely seasonal card to, um, individuals and say, it basically says, "Coacid Police Department found it appropriate to issue you a warning for the alleged traffic violation that you committed. Please drive safe and have a happy holiday season." I just think it's a really nice, friendly, community policing gesture that I wanted to, uh, call out. And that's it.
Thank you. Karen?
Nope, nothing.
Martha?
I've actually had, I see that we have, um, to apply to the alternative energy community. I wonder if we have any more, uh, power bank that we have to. I, I think we should be, um, adding or adding to for all the people that do, uh, fly through and we have not, uh, uh.
Is that in our packet? I can't remember.
Yes, it is, that's why I.
I think I would have had that person.
It's too bad that we can't get people to just volunteer and we need to go out and seek people.
You should try kidnapping.
There are so many talented people in this town. I'm, I'm very happy we can get people this way, but it's good to have a group of people ready.
Do you want to put this on the agenda, or is it something we can make a motion for now? The alternative energy appointment?
Well, I'd like not to do it right now because I think we're, uh, signing.
You want to know if there's other applicants?
That's what I want to know.
Yeah.
I'm not against the process, but I just, you can, uh, want to know if you're ready. It's a good study.
At the meeting last week, they were looking at some, um, very interesting alternatives to bring forward, which they, which I think would be, um, I can't sign and talk.
What is this? Oh, wow.
Just go under the line.
Any else, Martha?
Oh, Socio-Votec has a Temerization Fund, Chapter seventy-one, they want us, that's part of the car's plan.
Got a town meeting article, right?
Yeah.
Tracy, can you start a folder for, for town meeting articles and put that request in? Thank you.
What was the request? I'm sorry.
Uh, Socio-Votec.
Oh, yeah.
Has a, uh, request for town meeting article.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
And I noticed on tomorrow night's agenda, um, he's setting the date for the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm just accustomed to grabbing.
We're gonna schedule tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, I didn't know whether that was.
In other words, there'll be a schedule presented, and you can decide what we want to change or not. Yeah.
Isn't it a little early? Isn't it used again?
Has to be done by the thirty-first.
I'm just, I'm just number.
You got five, any smaller?
I think it's growing.
So Tracy, these have to be up to.
Last time I signed my name this many times, I was signing on a mortgage.
The divorce.
Oh, don't go there.
Yeah.
That requires a signature stroke every month.
I start signing.
It's a good thing we don't have a big commercial base.
Really? Might have to be done over two nights.
Robo-signatures.
I'm gonna put a heart on this door.
There's an idea. Just pay your bill.
Which is very good.
Seems to seem like this is nice. Seems even nicer to see them survive.
That's right. Well, it's, you know, plastic devices, it's, uh, it's, one night can have one hundred, uh, in the middle of the night.
We're not on the double-sided set yet?
Uh, yeah.
This is making for exciting TV, I'm sure. How many are there, Tracy?
Uh, there's about ninety-seven, tonight and tomorrow, because some of those businesses have, like.
Like, right, like entertainment, virtual.
Yeah.
Alcohol, right?
Seven something.
Good God. With any luck.
I liked the system better last year, they were going every which way, and we had to.
Yeah.
Check them, then we missed a lot, you know?
Am I supposed to be signing anyone's name in particular?
Frosty the snowman.
Challenge anybody to read these signatures.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So this is the last of these? Yeah. Yeah. No, no. So this has two, you can sign it. Did you get the small letters? It's two small letters, yeah.
He's squeezing into that little line.
Oh, I can do anything. First of all, never be limited.
In the box? Yeah. Just this one.
How you gonna, oh, um, so chairman, how you gonna do the talking recommended, that you shouldn't, uh?
That's tomorrow night. That's tomorrow night.
Well, you pass it out. Okay.
Is that it? Okay. OPEB, they're right here.
Well, there, there are two of us here, plus Brian, who's been acting as a advisor to us.
Great, why not?
Happy to be going.
Yeah. Grab a couple more chairs and, um.
And, uh, let me ask you, we have, uh, the slide deck we presented at the special town meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, which most of you, I think, have seen. Uh, also, you have the letter that we sent to you. Can I assume that you've all seen a copy of that, if not, you've committed it to memory?
Yes.
You're all? No.
Well, it's, uh.
No.
You haven't gotten that?
No. No, I don't see that.
Do you have any extra copies? Well, we're figuring that out, can, just for the record, can you introduce yourselves? Do you have an address?
Yes, I'm Tim Davis, and I'm, uh. On the, uh, OPEB committee. And this is Carl Forsyth, also Saint, well, just.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work over the past couple of months. More importantly.
Don't go through the deck for people at home?
Well, we're happy to go through the deck. Let me suggest that, uh, if there are questions as we go through, please don't hesitate to interrupt me, have questions, we'll try to field them. Brian has been at most of our meetings, I think, and is a, uh, a good advisor to this committee, and happy to have him respond as well. Can you see what's behind you?
Yes.
We also have a TV on here, yeah.
I'm just curious how this is gonna work.
I brought my wallet.
Well, people at home can see it on their screen, so, so, um, you know, as you know, town meeting has two hundred, three hundred people attend, and we have a community of seven thousand. I don't know how many are watching tonight, but, so a lot of people, this will be new.
Well, I'm particularly interested if you can all see it.
Yeah, no, we'll, we turn around and twist our neck and watch it.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's do it, I'm worried.
No, I just, oh, I'm sorry, I just gave you those copies, the board had, so if they can't see it, they can see it. Yeah, hard copy, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have another one?
Yeah, this is with, I'll keep this with my wallet now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
You want two?
No. Well, I need a coaster, sure.
Let's go to slide three, which is the OPEB committee. It's made up of John Chapman, who is not here, uh, but John, you see a little bit of his bio there, uh, myself, uh, Carl Forsyth, who is here, and Peter Piscatori has been serving, uh, representing the advisory committee. Next slide. OPEB, of course, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and that basically means, uh, health insurance for retirees. However, let me say, excuse me?
I'm, I'm trying to just get to the right slide, which one do you want? Sorry.
Four.
I think it's four, these are, uh, how many is it?
Four, something like that. Four, I apologize.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
What we as a committee have been doing is, uh, looking at the whole picture, not just the retirees' health insurance issues, but the overall issue of, uh, health insurance, and also more globally, uh, the issue that all of this represents compensation to the individuals. Both compensation that was committed to them when they were hired, plus compensation as we look forward, uh, hiring new employees. So, instead of simply looking at the health insurance issues for retirees, we've looked at the, the whole, uh, issue globally. There are two basic ways to fund OPEB. One is pay-as-you-go, or what is referred to here as PEGO, and that is, that's basically paying the premiums for, um, retirees' insurance each year currently. This year, or in two thousand thirteen, there's approximately one point two million dollars, or three point two percent of our budget. The, uh, GASB approach, which is the, uh, government side of FASB for accounting principles, uh, is now insisting that we as a town recognize future accrued liabilities and pay the expenses for that into a separate fund. And of course, Coacid has started to do that, and we currently have paid another chunk of money into that, that fund, as of the special town meeting. There are a couple of problems, uh, that we are facing here, and I don't think I need to, to tell you that, uh, this is a problem not only that Coacid has, but many towns and other municipalities throughout the country have. The one that recently came to light really is Detroit, uh, which really got itself.
John just came in. John, wanna come up?
John, come, come join us, grab a, grab a chair. If it's left unattended to, uh, what can happen, of course, is what happened in Detroit, and certainly none of us want that to happen, and that's why we're trying to address this problem now, and not simply kicking a can down the road. The problem is that the insurance premiums are increasing faster than inflation and faster than the town budget. Uh, town budget, as you know, grows at approximately two and a half to three percent a year, and the, uh, actuarial estimate for, uh, long-term health insurance premiums are five percent a year, so there is a gap that is ever widening. The, uh, the accrued liability under the current PEGO system, if you will, uh, is today at approximately thirty-six million dollars, which is about one times our annual budget, um, and there has been, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand of dollars funded for that currently. I think the additional, there was additional money at the special town meeting, so that's somewhat higher now. But it's still, yes.
Just a question, you have, you have a parenthetic, uh, item that says that, uh, it's twenty-one million if we were to fully fund this, which I assume means now.
Well, that's if we were to, if we were to, if we were to somehow find the money to fully fund it.
Right.
We would only need to come up with twenty-one million.
Right, so my question is, what, what discount rate did, is applied to this, do you know?
No, I don't remember, but what did they use?
Basically, thirty-six million is used as four percent.
Okay.
And if you have a fully funded policy, meaning not that you put it all in now, but that you basically have a credible policy to.
Right.
Fully fund it every year, um, they'll grant the returns on that and use a discount rate of seven and a half percent.
So.
So that's the difference between, it's the difference in the discount rate.
Okay. And there, I'm, I'm asking the question just to, it, it, part of the trend rate, as I, it, it, you, you folks have been working on, is that we're looking at a segment of the population that has a higher use for healthcare.
That's correct, yeah.
Right, and I guess my point is that, that as a result, the trend rate becomes pretty sticky. In other words, you, it's not, it's not likely that we'll find, uh, that that inflation rate that's being assumed at five percent is going to back off much. It, it's simply demand, demand is always there, right? But at the same time, the discount rate, or if you will, the, the assumed rate of return is variable.
It's a function, complex function.
Right.
So straight prices, you know, all the forces going on in the healthcare industry, the changes in technology which drive utilization, as well as all the behavioral things which sort of affect utilization across the board.
Right, and the basis for the question really is, is just that, I mean, it's, it's an acknowledgement of what you first started out with, which is that there's a high trend rate, and it's not likely that that's gonna soften. And then combined with that, we still have to make an assumption based upon some future growth rate on the funding side, which may or may not come about as, as a result. The problem's big. Intransigent.
Right. The next slide, please, Tracy. The impact of this, uh, accrued liability, or this situation, if you will, uh, is significant to the town in future years. Uh, it can certainly impact the interest of our retired employees, uh, and I would say that it also would impact our current employees going forward. It does impact the town's financial stability, uh, if we don't do something about it, and then importantly, the, uh, bond ratings for the town would be impacted if we did not do something about it.
Costs the financing.
The next slide gives you, uh, some general numbers as to what we're dealing with, the, uh, the healthcare, uh, expenses that we have in Coacid, the different plans we have, and I, I don't need to go through each of these, but you can see that there are, some of them are significantly different than others. Between the, uh, teachers and town employees, for example, there are significant differences in that, but this, you can review that at your, your leisure.
Is it?
Yes.
Excuse me, Tim, um, is part of that, um, because there's different plan for the teachers, doesn't the, the, the plan affect?
There are different plans.
Plans, so it's, is, is it really apples to apples, or is it apples to?
Well, there, there are different plans, so they're not apples to apples, but the costs are apples to apples, the dollars are, that are, that are here. But the plans are different, and that's one of the issues, is we have different plans that cost different amounts for both the individual and for the town.
But if, do we, I mean, I'm asking this question because I don't know the answer. Is the plan for the teachers such that eighty-five percent is comparable to fifty percent? Or is it really that different?
You're saying.
In terms of the benefits?
Premiums such that eighty-five percent of X is the same as fifty percent of Y.
Or is it close, or is it?
We haven't, I don't think, looked directly at that, but just.
I mean, because it seems like there's a, a real disparity.
Well, we've heard about the planned benefits, I would be surprised if the values are comparable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The next slide gives you the current census of the people that we're dealing with, and again, these are, uh, both the, um, retirees, uh, and the survivors of the retirees that are covered, the active employees and dependents, um, in, in these, uh, in the teachers and in the, um, the other employees, or referred to here as non-teachers. The next slide shows, uh, really the issue graphically that, that I've been referring to. In, uh, in two thousand fifteen, if you start on our lower left, um, the town budget was, is protected to be approximately thirty-seven million, and the accrued liability, uh, as computed by our actuary, is thirty-nine million. And as you can see as we go out, because of this issue of insurance premiums growing at five percent, and our town revenue's growing at two and a half to three percent, by the time you get out to two thousand forty-two, you have a, uh, an accrued liability that is more than double what the town budget is. The next slide tells you very much the same thing, but what it's, what it's showing here is the impact on other town operations. If, as an example, if we get out to the point where, uh, the, uh, OPEB costs, uh, become, uh, close to twenty percent of the town budget, that just means we have that much less to deal with all the other things that you folks know very well.
To clarify one thing, I think on that chart, that top part is active total health insurance? Not just OPEB?
Okay.
I mean, the, the OPEB share of it grows in the same, or grows in the same way, but it sort of extends the, reiterates the earlier point that the same issue's going on with your active employees and health insurance, and together they have this kind of impact on, it's a, a proper.
Yeah, I think the big issue here on a very large-scale basis is that we are constrained by how much we can raise our tax base. And so, that's the top one, we only have a hundred percent revenue, and the three point six million, I think, of total healthcare costs that, that John is finding out, will rise by over five percent a year, so you've got, um, increasing pressure, and so, as Tim eloquently stated, you've got, you're going from ninety-one percent, roughly nine percent of your budget is being, um, used for healthcare expense in four years. That number goes substantially higher, where twenty-two percent of your total revenue base is gonna be subsumed by healthcare costs, whether it is for retirees or active employees, so that's, that's really the, the crux of it, is how, how do you get ahead of slowing down the curve?
Bending the cost curve. We've all heard that before. So the options that we have in front of us are, number one, do nothing, which certainly this committee does not recommend. We can, uh, reform benefits to sustainable levels for both employees and retirees. We can increase the OPEB trust fund balances, and there are a number of ways we could do that, uh, or we could look for some reasonable combination of those two. I won't dwell on the do-nothing approach, because I think that all of us probably feel that, uh, that would be irresponsible, uh, to do, given that this town and the, the, uh, citizens of the town clearly indicated they would like a fiscally responsible town, so I won't spend time on that. But what we're here tonight to do is to recommend to you that we work with you, uh, or your representative from your board, uh, to develop potential solutions. to develop potential solutions, to develop recommendations. And we would suggest that that would be done in the first part of 2014. And we would come back to this board in February with our recommendations. Some of the recommendations may well be recommendations that you can handle directly as a board. And then there are others that may need to go to the town meeting, which we would work to having that ready to go in the April town meeting. And then implement the recommendations as approved in May.
By the way, we haven't decided when we're having our town meeting yet.
I certainly haven't. Maybe in May or June.
We're taking that up tomorrow night.
Spring town meeting.
We have time.
When you do get your recommendations, would it be possible for us to receive them in advance of the actual presentation? Because it's much better for me if I can look at something and digest it and before I actually have to discuss it.
Yes, that would certainly be our intention, and I apologize. There was a letter here...
No, this wasn't meant for tonight, this was just going forward.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I will work with Tracy and whoever the new town manager is to make sure that you do get it in advance. I don't know why this letter, which is addressed to you, didn't, somehow didn't get to you. But anyway, we'll work that out.
I also, I think that it's a great, a good schedule. And all the candidates that we've had come in seem to be very knowledgeable about the OPEB and everything. So I'm very, you know, sure that you'll be able to work with whoever the town manager is at that time and meet the schedule. We do have to fudge a few days, but...
I heard a request from you just a second ago that you get the direct engagement from the board.
Yes.
And I can understand why you'd want it. Just, Mr. Chairman, I'll step forward. I'll be happy to volunteer if it's the wish of the board that we formulate a subcommittee. I'd volunteer my name for it.
Could I also recommend that maybe we find somebody from the school committee to sit on, you know, on this? I mean, I don't know how everybody feels, but I just think it would be worth them because obviously you're going to be discussing their benefits.
It's important to build consensus, townwide.
It's part of their compensation.
Right, and obviously this is something that's going to affect them. So maybe we could have this after the first of the year as a general item to talk further on it.
How long it takes to work these things out? I think we need to basically, as a group, be hitting the ground at first of the year. So to the extent you can get that person named and engaged in January, we better...
We can get them right away.
I totally agree that it's important to have them on board, because you can tell this is really about, I mean, there are some shorter-term things you may be able to do that'll sort of put a dent in it in the short term. But long-term, it's really about compensation policy and HR policy and how it affects schools as much as it does...
Oh, no, I definitely agree with Diane that we need to have the schools involved. So I was asking the question about the percentages on the schools, because I think we need to understand that before we go ahead and make some assumptions.
School board has a meeting tomorrow at Ross United. I don't know whether we should ask for the liaison, or you should, Mr. Chairman. How should we get there?
Well, as a board, why don't we discuss that right now? I think it makes sense to have both the liaison from the board of Sloughman and from the school committee. Is there anybody we're leaving out?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think we just need...
They're contracted.
They're all town employees, they're part of the town.
So I think we could arrange by the first of the year to make our appointment and let you know who that is, and request it to school.
Can we do that now, if Steve's willing to do it? And I don't know.
No, I was actually throwing my name out there, hoping that one of you would call me off.
No. No.
I think this is going to require someone good at diplomacy.
You know, oh, that would be, that's not you.
No.
You know, I don't know whether it's worth just, you know, having one of you guys reach out to the superintendent and just having her bring it forward to the, to the, to the school committee. I don't know that we need to even get involved in it, but...
Or even just reach out to the chair of the school committee?
Just say, could you appoint somebody to help us out? And then, you know, if they're willing to take it and just do it, then you have your committee set January 2nd.
Okay, so I wasn't here when this board was formed. It's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's an advisory board to the town manager?
That's correct.
So really the town manager? I mean, I don't have any problem with anything that's being discussed here or anything, but I just want to make sure that we're...
At the, at the close of it, though, what Tim was describing, I think the board, or the committee members have recognized, is that while the town manager will carry the water forward on the recommendations, most of the recommendations that are going to be discussed are going to be policy recommendations. Truly, the potential exists to deal with structure and a long-term budget recommendation with regard to funding the OPEB.
I understand all that, but I'm just, I'm just making the point that it's the town manager's committee.
Right, but as a board, we could ask one of our members to attend those meetings and represent our interests, and that would kind of be what we'd be thinking this liaison position would be.
And there's got to be some sort of tangible link between their work and the new town manager, and frankly, there's no one left but us and, well, the school committee.
So do you want to motion to, on behalf of the board, to ask our board representative to be Steve, to the OPEB committee?
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Congratulations.
I thought it was going to be...
Holding back. All right, boys, do you have manacles?
Yeah, good luck with him.
Would you like me to contact the school superintendent?
Yeah.
Or the board.
Or the chairman of the school committee.
I need to say, yeah, chairman.
Schubert, Sawyer Street.
Actually, I can, I'll text you his number if you've, if you just leave me.
You can, I'm sure I can track it down.
Okay.
Tracy is the keeper of all important...
Oh, that's right, what am I thinking? All right.
Thank you very much.
Did you leave that letter so we could, you have it, so we'll get coffee sometime?
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Selecting correspondents.
We had correspondents from the Attorney General on the Second Amendment...
And that, it was good news?
Very good news.
Yeah, do you want to tell us, Martha, inform us?
Yeah, it was an extension, it's been approved and modified. And there's very little, it says, the extended sub shall be approved June 3 of 2014. It's down, so it's completely complete, but all properties are identified in the Harvard-Suhr district. And there are very few, and as I look through the backup, I think that's wonderful. So we're finally coming to an end. It's been very diligent work, you know, they've been very good with sending it because the Attorney General has no trouble with it.
We also had a, I guess it's not in this bracket, I was just looking for it. Yes, yes, actually, we did, part of it's from the Chairman of the Governance Committee. So what's the board's pleasure? They requested an extension.
I, you know, I go to probably 30 percent of their meetings just because I find it fascinating. But, and they meet every week. I think we have to extend it. They have, you know, their charge has shifted at times, but they have been committed and working diligently on aligning the bylaws with the Town Manager Act, the new amended Town Manager Act, which has yet to be signed. But, and, I mean, they just haven't finished their work. I think it's a very simple, let's let them finish their work and come to town meeting with maybe some, you know, the truth is with the town meeting, we're going to have to work back, you know, a month when the warrant articles are due. And so any, any recommendations that they're going to make to bylaw changes would have to, you know, queue up through the normal process to get in the warrant. So they're really, they're, what they've done probably, and I don't know, Sam, you could probably tell us, probably 75, 80 percent of what they need to do to complete this particular piece.
We've broken out a map where we think the changes have to be made.
We have that.
We've started to work on language on the changes. We haven't finalized that yet. The plan is to finalize that probably in January. Have several open town meetings to discuss the changes, see if people tend to agree with what we're saying, and does that make sense? And then after those town meetings, finish up, finalize exactly what's going to be presented and be ready when the law is published.
Well, I have one concern, that you have your meetings at 7:30 in the morning, and the general populace can't go. I would like to go to that, but I think that's a terrible time to have a committee meeting. It should be in the late afternoon or evening, sort of a general populace. This is a very important thing, changing bylaws. There should be people that want to go. There are a lot of people who have complained to me about, they want to know what the Governance Committee is doing, because they can't go. I, I think this is something that bothers me, and I'm really concerned about the committee meeting.
Well, I will bring it up with our chair to see if we can have evening meetings.
And how do you, I mean, is there term limits with the committee? How is the committee set? Because I, it was in existence before I came on the board.
It's actually, I can address that. I've attended many of their meetings. It's interesting you bring that question up, because it was one of the original charges brought before this committee, was to determine term limits for all committees. Their term limit was set by the Board of Selectmen with regard to their life. Interestingly enough, there have been, as a board originally, if I remember, constructed as nine people, there have probably been somewhere in the neighborhood of 26 or 27 members over the course of their existence now, for what, two and a half years? And it's a fairly wide cross-section. The net result of all of that, however, is that the term limits come into being at the expiration of the committee itself. Okay, so this was never intended as a troika structure, but it was asked of the committee to determine whether or not there should be term limits on all other standing committees, which I thought was fairly, fairly interesting.
We did start some work on the standing committees, but Town Manager Act took precedence, and we also felt that once that was passed, since the legislature, it was more important to get the bylaws aligned. One thing we feel is that the Governance Committee, or a committee like the Governance Committee, should almost be a permanent committee of the town to continually look at the bylaws and the various committees of the town and the town's operations. Because we're scratching the surface of things that probably should be amended in the bylaws. Some of the things you'll come upon are, we still have reference within the bylaws to the Personnel Committee setting town salaries. Well, when the Town Manager Act was passed, that, get away with that, the original Town Manager Act. So that should be changed. I mean, it just, it's antiquated.
Sam, is that something that you're going to address between now and town meeting, that particular thing, because it's in conflict with the Town Manager Act?
If you look at the grid analysis, I think it's not in the grid analysis. It's a pretty, it's almost housekeeping.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no definition as a troika.
Right, I know. Who knows what it is? It's very mysterious.
Yeah, which we should have.
Right.
Do you regularly have everything, you work with the town council? Because since we had to get corrections there, it seemed to me you should have, if you'd sent that to town council, it would have gone smoothly through the legislature and they wouldn't have to come back.
Yeah, town council did fully review it. Signed off on the final copy.
Went to town council.
It went to town council at the very last minute, and it was very rushed. Let's be honest about that.
Well, I'm not in the mood to agree with that, but...
But do you regularly limit your meetings to do, you think?
And what was presented at town meeting was what town council recommended.
To that, to that point, I think that the committee obviously has worked very hard and done good work over the years. At this point, I do think that, much the same as what was done with the HR function, we do have a resource available to us. The bylaws are legal, they should be written legally. And I think it's time, my personal opinion, is that it's time to hand off that information to town council, whoever at town council does the legislative bylaw writing, and have them review it, have them present it in much the same way. I mean, I was very impressed with the HR presentation to us. Present it to us in much the same way. I think that it could be done much more efficiently and effectively, especially since it's going to have to go to them anyway. So, and we have a new town manager coming in. I have thoughts as to how things should be going forward, but I think that that's something that the board and interested citizens that we should, we should come before, come before in a discussion with the new town manager to see how we move forward as far as, do we have a bylaw committee? Do we have a charter committee? What do we do?
I don't know what the right committee is.
Yeah, I don't either.
One of our conclusions is there needs to be a standing committee to deal with this.
Even in your charter, there is, you know, issue looking at whether water and sewer should be combined and things like that. So that really, and in the DOR report, it recommends having a charter commission. Now, I know Martha doesn't like charter. A lot of people tell me, no, 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 we don't want a charter commission. Karen, don't go there. So I don't know if that's the right thing either, but I think that it's a discussion that needs to be had at a future date. And my, my opinion is that the committee has done great work, but it's time to hand it off to, especially if we want to have this in time for the annual town meeting. That would be my...
See, I, just, just, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I've learned from my father, who would lift me up off the ground by my ears, was you never leave a job half-done. This committee has taken on a variety of tasks and roles in their two and a half years. This most current is probably the one with the greatest depth and time involved. We wonder why we don't have people stepping forward to volunteer for our committees when we're really quite ready to take them out of the job halfway through it, which makes no sense to me. Yes, we have a task at hand that could end on the 31st with the sunset of this committee. Or we could have a task completed by the committee sitting here, wrapping up the role of their organization by annual town meeting, sunsetting then, at which point the work is turned over, but completed. At the end of the conversation, the bylaws are of and by the people for themselves. They're not to be left to a town manager, they're not to be left to an attorney. They are our laws, and it seems absolutely right and purposeful to have a committee of our own citizens complete that job.
Steve?
No, no, that's my statement to the town.
And I'm just, I'm just saying, in response to your statement, the bylaws are the town's bylaws, but they are the town's bylaws. They're not being rewritten, they're being corrected to come into compliance with the Town Manager Act, and they will be voted on by that town meeting. If there are new bylaws that are being proposed, if they're like the zoning or the planning board or health, then they come forward, they come up through the committees and the appropriate boards and committees.
Sam, are you writing new bylaws?
No.
Okay, are you, no, I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
What I'm trying to do, through the spring town meeting, is to correct the bylaws so they track with the new town manager.
Right, okay.
We don't have the time or the resource.
Right.
To do everything that should be done with the bylaws.
So.
That we freely admit, that's why we would suggest that.
I'm not saying.
A permanent committee or group put together.
I'm gonna recognize Agnes, she's had her hand up several times, go ahead.
Agnes McCann, one oh four, Down Street. I, I just think it's important to note that we don't have the New Town Manager Act back, so for the Governance Committee to be extended, and to continue with their task of comparing notes between bylaws existing and the New Town Manager Act, they don't have the language yet. They, they know what, we know what was sent up, but we don't know precisely what's coming back down, and it, it just doesn't seem to me that it should be a very productive effort to keep this committee going, doing what they think they should be doing, if it turns out they have to stop and sort of redo it, or, you know, look at an act that's a little different than what they did. I mean, just the timing is wrong. This committee started out, its original charge, I'd just like to remind the world, was to review committee structure and term, consider things like term limits and how committees operated, so that we wouldn't have a fiasco like we did with the Conservation Committee two years ago, and in January of two thousand twelve, at the meeting of the Governance Committee, they were told, directed, instead, to look at the Town Manager Act first, which possibly was, I mean, you have to admit, mistakes when they're made, possibly was not a good idea. They were supposed to be looking first at committees and then bylaws, and that might lead to wanting to change the Town Manager Act. They did the reverse, that may be why they're not finished, and there's, I just don't see any reason to continue it now. If we get the final legislation signed off on, and then wanna have a committee work on coinciding, you know, coordinating the bylaws with the New Town Manager Act, we can do that.
So you'd suggest starting over at that point?
It's not starting over.
No, I'm asking, I just, so, so would it be a new committee which would be starting over at that point?
When it's time to do it.
Okay.
This committee was, was started as a reconvening of the.
Yes, I know, I know.
Just, just because the, the individuals are engaged, and, you know, I think in terms of, I see their work as, as, you know, eighty percent complete, and, and this is just tidying this, this package up. It will eventually then go to, to Town Council, as it should, to, to get the legalese correct, but, you know, in terms of the, the current amended act that's before the Senate, and Fred and I have worked a little bit with it, because there were some clarifications that needed to get made, they will not make any substantive changes. It, it's basically the same act, ma, with some grammatical changes, they've added an A, and there was an amended amendment that we, a motion that we voted unanimously to approve a few weeks ago, just to change an A and a C that was off. So, so if and when it gets passed, the town, the amended Town Manager Act will be pretty much what town meeting, they're not gonna fool with it, I've been told that by them, by the Senate and, and, you know, and Council over and over again, so, I, I see this as, you know, people that have met week after week to, to do the right thing, and they have a little bit of work left, I think we should extend their charter, I, I just, on the seven thirty meeting time, one of the reasons they decided to do that was because a lot of the people on the committee were, were working in Boston, and, and had families at night, or were sitting on other committees, and it was really a convenience factor. I would say their attendance record is probably the best, next to this board, the best in town, and, you know, and they have had evening meetings to, to try to balance that, so I, I, I kinda take offense to that being a major issue, because there's a lot of people that can't come to meeting, night meetings as well, and you're not gonna ever be able to satisfy everybody, especially the busy, involved citizens in town, so, I, I, there is, to me, there's absolutely no sensible reason not to let them just tidy this thing up, finish making the changes, or the, or suggesting some changes that might need to get made, just to bring the language in the bylaws in line with the anticipated amended Town Manager Act, and, you know, it's gonna take them, again, working back from whatever the town meeting date tends to be, I mean, we're talking probably seven weeks before that, they're gonna have to have everything with Town Council, and they really have about five more weeks' worth of work, I would think, just based on the calendar, and.
Seems to me according to what we have, lots, lots of blanks on this, this, I don't know how much time it takes for each one, but it seems to me it's an awful lot of work.
Martha, if that's the grid you're looking at.
I look at the grid, that's what.
Yeah, if it's blank, there's no change needed.
It didn't say that, it says TBD.
That's not blank.
We don't have any proposed change for that.
Oh, okay, as I say, I, I know, I really would like to go to that meeting, it's not really good.
What we did on the grid was we took each little part of the Town Manager Act.
I can't go at seven thirty in the morning.
And mapped to the bylaw, and then went through and said, okay, does this, is this something that's out of line or not?
So, I, I'd like to make a motion to extend the Governance Committee, so that they'll sunset after town meeting two thousand fourteen.
At the conclusion of?
At the conclusion of the two thousand and fourteen scheduled spring annual town meeting for FY fifteen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I, I think the scope needs to be narrowed, just to deal with the bylaws, I.
Sure.
Fair.
Yeah.
You wanna amend?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, that's what needs to be done, I think, to wrap up.
Let me ask you this, Fred, are they dealing with the bylaws, or are they dealing with the Town Manager Act?
Exactly, it's related to the conflicts of the Town Manager Act, so, so I, I think.
And at what, at what point could we expect that their work would be completed, and then sent to Town Council, in order to give Town Council sufficient time to review them?
Well, that's, that's something we need to discuss, I, when do we think?
I mean, it can't be two weeks before it goes to warrant.
Town Council's probably gonna need thirty days to just kinda double-check all of your work.
So he's gonna need, well, we don't know when the, in the town meeting.
Right.
Let's make an assumption that it's sometime in mid-April, okay?
Well.
So if it's mid-April.
Late April, yeah.
We should have the warrant completed out to everybody by the middle of March, and that would mean that we'd need, if Town Council needs thirty days to get his recommendations back for the warrant, we'd have to have everything to him by the middle of February. Makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Plus you'd need to have at least one or two public hearings, just to kinda run it by.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we definitely feel we need public hearing.
Okay.
The inputs are valuable, so we'd have to have all that finished by the middle of February.
Okay, so let me, let me suggest this, is there, is there a committee member willing to draft a scope to deal with this for a vote tomorrow night?
I'll do it.
We'll adjust the agenda tomorrow night?
First off, I'm concerned about this rumor going around that we're gonna have a town meeting in April, we've been having it in May, and who's been leading this charge to change it a month earlier?
Well, last year was there.
I haven't seen the schedule.
Last year was there.
It was, it was a time lapse.
But, yeah, in May, we, yeah.
I, I thought it was.
Well, what, what happened, Martha, is in the last couple of years, it shifted a month, and the argument has been to get more information out of the legislature.
Not tomorrow, tonight.
It's up to us tomorrow night, you know, there's gonna be a proposed date, that, numbers have been run by the town clerk, and then we can look at it, and we can decide if that makes sense or not, but it's this board's decision. We have to start somewhere.
Remember, it was split one time?
Well, there was several weeks between the town meeting and the election.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
It was unusual, but I think it had something to do with holidays, or.
Yeah, it was easier.
If the, if the question is, what is the amount of time to be allotted between town meeting date to be determined, and the presentation of these, of the finalized materials to Town Council for review, can we just set that as a time limit, so we can move ahead? In other words, you know, is that six weeks?
Well, I think it should just.
Is that about right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we can probably get it done before the end of January, but.
No, what I'm driving at here is, if you, if, since, since there's a motion on the table, and we could then amend it to narrow the scope, to harmonize the, the bylaws with the, with the, with the Town Manager Act as amended, to, and, and the objective is to have the committee's work substantially completed for presentation to Town Council six weeks prior to the, the annual town meeting date, does that fairly describe it, so that we can move it forward and keep the agenda for tomorrow night relatively clean?
I would like to vote on it, yeah. If we can do it, get it over with tonight, I mean.
So the concept would be narrow the scope to just deal with the new Town Manager Act and the conflicts vis-à-vis the.
Town Manager Act as amended, and the bylaws.
And with the bylaws, and, and that, six weeks prior is gonna be mid-February, or end of February at the latest, that.
Well, that's the anticipation, but.
I'd like to wait until tomorrow, till I see what.
Yeah, to see the scope, the proposed scope, right. So, so the scope will be subject to any amendments, or whatever, but.
And we do decide on where the town meeting is and all that, so we, we have, I want something more concrete before.
Okay, yeah, all right, so.
You don't wanna vote tonight?
No.
But we, we don't have the scope in front of us.
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
I still argue that if, if their work is, I'm sorry, Diane, what did you say, eighty percent?
Karen and I was making up numbers, so.
Well, Sam is nodding his head, eighty percent finished. That it's, it's almost completed, and at that point, it's, it simply to me makes sense to send it to the, to the experts, to make sure that it's, it's legal, because I know that in doing the Town Manager Act, I was at a meeting, the Town Council was there, there was quite a bit of back and forth about words, the committee felt things should be worded a certain way, Town Council was trying to explain that that was illegal, and would open the, the town up for things, there was not a harmonious situation, and I would like to avoid that, and I think that we could do that by taking the work that, that people have worked very hard on, taking that as a whole, giving it as a, as a stepping stone for Town Council, who does this all the time, writes bylaws, writes legislature, they're not writing new bylaws for the town, they're simply taking and har, and harmonizing, or making sure that the bylaws are in compliance with the New Town Manager Act.
You know, on that, and, and I could potentially agree with that, the issue is, these guys are going out of business in two weeks, and next week's a holiday, so, you know, there's, there's.
Who's going out of business?
Governance Committee, if we don't re-approve them, you know, they can't meet to then do that, so, I, I would like to just, you know, extend their charter, so they can plan their meetings, they can post a meeting for this Thursday if they want to, if we do it, take care of it tonight. It's clear what their, what their charge is, based on our conversations, and we can come up with a formal charge vote tomorrow night, but I don't know why we wouldn't just vote on, on extending their, their.
Charter.
Charter, thank you, till, through town meeting of April two thousand fourteen, or whenever it is, two thousand fourteen.
I think we do that tomorrow night, but if we do it tonight, we're extending it with the current charge, which I think is too broad right now, they need to focus on.
They're never gonna finish the whole charge, they haven't finished the whole charge in two years.
Right, they, right, and that charge is.
They're never gonna get the whole charge, so it has to be one way or the other, it can't be everything.
Well, I. I feel confident Diane can come up with something, she's heard everybody's concerns, something we can review tomorrow night, and, and subject to amendment, and, and we can deal with the rest of it then. Okay? It, I mean, we, we can vote it tonight, but I'm not, I, until I see the charge, I'm not gonna vote for a committee extension, till I see the charge, I mean, I wanna get it focused down to just what has to be done in the next eight weeks, basically, yeah, you know, the holidays are here, it really starts January first.
But that's something, we, we've discussed that here at this table for the last fifteen minutes, and I, I thought it was relatively clear between each party with that discussion, that there was general agreement, there is general agreement, to limit the scope to simply examination of the consistencies or inconsistencies between our existing bylaws and the Town Manager Act as amended, and as a matter of fact, the body of work presented to it by this committee shows exactly where they're going.
Right.
So, is there, my question is, if we know that, and.
It's by the privacy, Steve, of the Selectmen, to, you know, have, when they charge a committee, to have a written charge in front of the board, so everybody's clear about it.
Okay, all right.
So we're just asking for twenty-four hours to have a clear charge written.
All right.
So everybody's on the same page.
So what do you wanna do with the motion?
We can table it to tomorrow night.
Or you can.
Or you can withdraw and read, submit it tomorrow night, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'll leave it on the table.
I, I think I'd like to leave it open, because we, and I'll have a charge tomorrow night.
Yeah, so I, I think we did, we'll just table it to tomorrow night and deal with it then.
Where, where would you like to place it in tomorrow night's agenda?
It would make sense right after we discuss the town meeting date.
Or would it be a continuation of Selectmen comments, or, or Selectmen correspondence?
Well, it could go there, or it could have its own, we can agenda, excuse me, amend the agenda.
I did the same thing.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, and.
We've got two, we've got minutes for tomorrow, so if you may, either one.
Yeah.
They have to be put down. If there's an item that's going to happen, I don't know if we're gonna have a three.
And we can bring it up right around eight-thirty under that.
Okay.
Correspondence thing, and by then, hopefully we'll have set the date for town meeting and the annual elections. Go ahead. Okay, so right around eight-thirty?
Okey-dokey.
Okay. Any other Selectmen's correspondence?
No. Oh, the Planning Board represented the community presidential.
Right.
Someone who's resigned, someone who's been removed.
Okay, that was in the pack at Friday, right?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do anything.
No, we don't have to do all.
We can do it at, at first meeting in January, yeah.
No, I think, I believe the Planning Board appoints their own member, so it's just, it was just more notification that Clark Brewer and Mike Dickey has taken his place.
Yeah.
Very good.
As the rep from Planning Board on C, to CPC, is that right, Russ?
Yeah, and actually, if I could, we still do not have a member from Recreation and Open Space.
On CPC?
About the number of times no one's willing to step up, statutorily, we have to have a member, and it, it just makes it difficult for us, when it comes to a quorum, because there are always gonna be one or two or three.
I'm liaison to that.
To Open Space, and I.
I'm sorry, Diane?
Yeah.
There are two separate committees in town, right?
No, open space and recreation.
They're the same committee?
It's the same committee, there's a separate recreation committee.
Got it, that's a commission.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
They have not met in some time, Russ, so let me see what's going on, and I'll get that.
The last time I talked, they said that whoever may get appointed would probably not attend, and I'm not interested in that kind of amendment, if somebody is interested, they attend, if they don't, I will invoke the rule of the mystery. But, yeah, I've asked a number of times, and getting nowhere with it.
I'll speak to the chair of the committee, and see what I can find out. My only question is, if, if we're, if for some reason that's an issue, can we draw from the Recreation Commission, which are elected folks, or how specified is it in the CPC legislation?
Ted Carroll was our liaison before.
So he was, he's an employee.
Right, but he's, he's on, he's, he is on the Recre, well, I'm not sure he's on Recreation, he's maybe the liaison, he's like the, like the Town Manager is with us, but he is a representative on the Open Space Recreation Committee. I, I can't remember how the act is written, Russ, it's been a while since I've put it, does it specify that it?
It has to be a voting member.
A voting member of the Open Space Recreation Committee, specifically.
I don't think they care.
And if you don't, if you do not have a member from that committee.
And if you do, if you do not have a member from that committee.
You're in a, you're in a committee.
Then it doesn't stop the CPC from going forward?
Oh, no, it doesn't stop us, but, you know, it, it, I have to have five people that have a forum, and it's not unusual for a couple of people to have conflicts of one sort or another, if we want to be actual, if we're that, or tenuous or not.
I'll speak to the, that's all I can do, is talk to the, the chair and find out for them.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, any other selectmen correspondence? Approval of minutes? We have five, six minutes, is that right? We skipping over this?
No.
We skipping over the discussion of town manager candidates?
No, that's after this approval of minutes, yeah?
No.
Yeah.
You might have an old.
Oh, no, no, you're right, you're right. Never mind. No, no, I'm just, I'm misreading it. Never mind.
What's the oldest set of minutes, the, the?
November 18.
November 18? Do we have a motion on November 18? What's your correction?
Well, it says Eastern Connecticut, I believe. Isn't it, uh, different?
E A S T O N?
T E A N O R.
No, E E S T O N, eastern.
E S T O N, yeah, E S T O N. I can't read my handwriting.
Yeah, it's not eastern, it's easton.
Are we sure of that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't bury me on geography.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close, three, November 20th. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
I have a correction.
Yeah.
It's that chairman called, asked Mr. Hartford, when in fact we were interviewing Mr. Senior.
Oh.
It's all right.
Thank you. Good catch, Martha.
I moved it with your.
One second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. November 23rd, I wasn't there. All abstained, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any amendments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One extension, 40. 401. Uh, November 26th.
I'll move them.
Any discussion?
I didn't see a correction. That doesn't move.
They're pretty good catching, Martha.
We need a second one?
Yeah.
Second?
Oh, she did, yes, right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, 5 to 0. December 2nd.
I'll move them.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5 to 0. Okay. Discussion and decisions regarding the Town Manager position is the end of this.
I'd like to think about it. I think it's a good, agreed, and have to be the top consideration.
Okay, yeah.
Agreed, completely.
Yeah. All right. Is that satisfy everybody tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so move on. Topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I don't have anything.
No.
Anything come to mind for anybody else?
No.
Our next floor of selectmen meeting, meetings are the 17th of December, and then tentatively January 7th, 21st, and 28th, which is the first Tuesday, third, and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Yeah.
So, I think we'd probably go into that schedule through the election.
Yeah.
And if we need to schedule more around town meeting time, we can double up and discuss it then. Okay, and, public comment? Russ?
Russell Conetti, Tony Parker, have just a quick update on our CPC meeting last week. We had a fairly good turnout of people, actually more than I thought we would, and we got some proposals that I think we can do something with, but some of them are going to be definitely a work in progress. So, the later the town meeting date, the better for us. Some of these projects, if we do them, may require us to look into bonding because of the dollar amount.
Really?
Yeah, well, the swim club would like to build a building in the 800 to a million dollar range, and they're looking for 400 from us, which is a big chunk of our cash. And so, I'd like, if, if we can do something on that, that would be one I'd look at for that. Town hall came in without any specific numbers at this point, and not really sure which end of the building. You know, we can work over there, but we can't work over here, unless we can get this somehow to be described as historic. We had.
It's a period piece from 87.
Yeah. Well, Todd Goff, in one of our meetings, said anything over 50 is considered antique. Then he did a lot of dancing when I pointed out how old I was. We, we had a semi-proposal about, on the top of Beacon Rock, where the old railings used to be near the, the steps that are cut in, maybe doing something up there. Personally, I'm a little leery of that, only because it, we could very well be creating an attractive nuisance with a lot of liability in the town. You know, it doesn't take you long to get up there, but you can get down a lot quicker if you fall. We also are looking into getting a historic designation for the Cedar Street Cemetery that to turn past the dump.
On the golf course in between, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of, lot of, when you drive by, you can't really see it.
I'm sorry, who's buried up there? Is that settlers or?
Dead people.
Settlers, and there's, if you notice, there's a fair amount of American flags up there. They're all revolutionary, so.
Really? Wow.
There's actually a couple of crips on the backside.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, at first, we thought, you get a couple wheelparas full of dirt, and you go up and fill in the halls, but there's a lot more involved in it than that. But that's one of the proposals. Also, the roof of the gazebo at the Smith Memorial with the.
400?
400, thank you. I was going to take a stab at quadricentennial.
There you go.
Pretty good.
That might be five. About doing that.
Quinta.
And I think that was pretty much it, wasn't it, Diane?
Yes.
There was, well, there was also someone who wanted to talk about connecting a lot of the open space in, in a series of trails. That's very much going to be a work in progress, but it's something that'd be pretty interesting, I think.
Very exciting, yeah.
Yeah, like having a trail of arrow necklace trails.
Yeah, 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 which actually, you know, the acquisition of Fox Run does link a lot of different properties, although I don't think there'll be that much use of the trails. It's something to be looked into anyway. But, you know, whether people attended or not, it doesn't shut them off from coming in. Again, it was just kind of shake, curious to see what's out there. And there are a few other proposals I've heard that are, are talking of coming to us. We're probably going to meet the second week of January, start hearing proposals on something like the, the swim club. I've already contacted Peter Pescatori and said I'd like to, if possible, make it a joint meeting with capital budget advisory and us, rather than them having to go through the hoops three times. We can get all the questions out at once. And I think, in the case, and Steve and I had talked about this last year, in the case of large capital expenditures, it's a good counterpoint. You know, we can fund wants more than we can, where the town funds needs, and we have to make sure that the wants aren't just, you know, being overridden by our emotions about a particular project. That's what we'd like, the number of guys come in and talk to us. Then, probably somewhere early February, after we've discussed the prior projects, add up what we've got, requests, look at what we have in money, and see how we want to proceed from there. But, but it was a good meeting, and I kind of have an appreciation for Santa Claus. We had a lot of people coming in asking.
They did not sit on our laps.
No.
Could, could you have a precis of the legislations, not all the, so that people, put it in Amerina, so that people would understand, you know, what the categories and everything are that you do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I've had people question, you know, and I was actually involved with original legislation.
Yeah, yeah, there's, you know, we have plenty of links to the different sites that show that, because there are a little, some weird idiosyncrasies. You know, conceive, while we couldn't work on this end of the building, we could work on that side. We could fund having that end torn off entirely, rebuilt as a modern structure as far as systems, and with CPC money reproduce the facade of the building or any historical aspects of it, so you would have a building that looks like it does now, but is going to be more efficient than trying to re-rig what we've got. We couldn't pay to paint the front doors of the old town hall, but we could pay to paint the whole thing, because then it goes from repairs to, to our renovations.
There you have this section, what you saw, is that?
Oh, God, yeah. I was surprised. I mean, I, the pictures they showed us of this side, it, it goes to show you why you have a structure like the old town hall or the meeting house still standing there after 300 years, where stuff that's being built now isn't going to be around half that length.
Well, thank you, Russ.
Or in this case, 30 years, you know? This is falling apart.
Okay, next item, we have, actually have on the agenda tonight and tomorrow night, which is the executive session regarding the acting Town Manager Contract and Town Manager Contract. I don't know if we really are positioned, it seems to me, well, after the discussion before that, which is tomorrow night, discussion decisions regarding the Town Manager Position, it makes more sense, once we know what we've done then, to be discussing what needs to come in to executive session.
I thought Paul said that he was available tonight than that tomorrow night, but he's not here, so.
Yeah.
Is he coming?
He's not, yeah. It depends on, no?
No.
Let me just check. Is we a half hour ahead, 25 minutes ahead, hold on. Let's take a five-minute recess while I just.